Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Wareham Planning Board meeting of Monday, November 24th, 2025. It is 6:00 PM. And we are in the Wareham Multi-Service Center located at 48 Marion Road. We're also available online or through Zoom. The connection is available through the agenda, which is available online on the Planning Board's website. So I would like to call the meeting to order with a roll call, starting to my left.
Mike Baptiste here.
Oh, I'm next. Carl Schultz here.
Julie Marianne here.
Sam Corbett here.
And Jane Gleason here. So we've got five members. And we will start with our preliminary business, the first item being the approval of meeting minutes for November 10 and November 17, 2025. And it appears that we have not yet received those meeting minutes for review, so we will continue those to our next meeting for review and approval.
Madam Chair, we also haven't received October 28th either. So the three are now outstanding.
10/28?
Yeah, right? Was it the 10? Oh, maybe it was 10/20.
We had a 10/20.
10/20, so, sorry, we have those. It's still just those two.
Yeah, yeah, just 10/20. So it's November 10 and November 17 that are missing still, and obviously tonight's. So we will look at those at our next meeting. The next item is project number 20-23, Quinton Way, 24 Oak Street, asking for a one-year extension. Is there anybody here to speak on that?
They might not be. I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom. That's all right. I kind of, if you wouldn't mind, I'll just speak to this one.
Okay.
As it seems appropriate. So this is one, okay, let me, let me give you my interpretation of where we're at, and then I can kind of explain why I put it in front of you guys.
Okay.
Okay. So in 2024, more heavily brought forward the LEEDs Act. There was provisions within the LEEDs Act that created almost a second permit, or a third permit extension act that's been brought before. The basis of this one was a broad interpretation under like economic development and kind of stuff just to keep permits in approval kind of outside of the COVID timeframe. So the LEEDs Act, essentially what it did was it gave almost every land use permit a two-year extension. And I don't want to confuse this with another provision that she put out that was for solar specifically. There, there was another solar provision that she put out that extended all solar and battery energy storage system permits until 2029, I believe. I'll have to get you the exact date on that one. But, so under the LEEDs Act, it basically gave all permits that were in effect between January 1st of '23 to January 1st of '25 an automatic two-year extension. The reason I have it in front of you guys tonight is because our, a lot of the decisions that we write have some type of condition that say, you know, if not acted upon within two years, the permit is, is null. Where I do think this one falls within the LEEDs Act, I still wanted to put it in front of you guys just to cover the extension of that special condition. Were, were, if you were to, let's say, deny the extension that's before you tonight, I do think they would have a pretty strong case. But with that being said, the current extension that's in front of you now, it's not expired, so you can act on it as an extension. It is to continue the development of the roadway of Quinton Way, which is at 24 Oak Street. After talking to the homeowner, they purchased the property from the original person that came in front of you for the subdivision, and they're just in the process of getting the work going again and trying to finish out the road. So they've had quotes that it will be done in a year, so that's what they're looking for tonight, a one-year extension.
Madam Chair, through you to Mr. Farady. If I motion an extension to a date certain, what date should that be?
That's a good question.
I'm, yeah.
Yeah, when is the expiration, I guess?
Madam Chair, if I could?
Yes.
Josh, it was filed with the town clerk on February 14th. I'm looking at the decision.
Of what year?
The certification, sorry, 2024. And the LEEDs Act does extend by operation of law, and it covers subdivision, zoning, concom, based on...
It was pretty much all land use permits.
Yeah.
I'm not exaggerating when I say that.
And recent case law confirms that. Yeah. Recent case law also confirms that.
Yeah.
A little bit of overreach there, but...
The, the thing that...
Okay, so just get a date. I'll make a motion, we'll get this...
Yeah, just, that's fine.
Tell me the date.
Oh.
February 14th was the certification from the clerk.
So February 14th, 2024.
'27.
It would have expired in '26, yep. So '27 would be one year after the expiration.
So, Madam Chair, I'd like to enter a motion to extend the permit for 2023 Quinton Way, 24 Oak Street, one year from the current expiration, February 24th, oh, excuse me, February 14th, 2026, until February 14th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Nope, okay, seeing none, seeing no, no interested people for more discussion, I'll take a vote.
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Marianne, aye.
Sam Corbett, aye.
And Chair votes aye. Extension granted. Next item on the agenda, project number 1225, Two East Boulevard LLC, 42 East Boulevard. Yep, that looks quite straight, thanks.
I was just gonna hand out a couple of things to you guys. One of them was just that exhibit plan that we put together. That one just solely shows the parking spaces, so I put it on 11 by 17, just to look at that, keep it separate from the, from the design buildings.
Yep.
A little more clear to read.
Thank you, Bill.
And I also have a handout that talks about special permits in site plan review and distinctions between both of them. The reason I printed this out was due to a lot of the correspondence that we received from the abutters that were, you know, they had some commentary about...
Adam Mike, he said, he can't, he's not hearing you.
I know, that's why I was gonna move.
Trying to figure out which way to go. Are you trying to figure out which way to get to your chair?
I appreciate it.
Yeah, well set.
Got them.
Did you get a copy?
Oh, I love, I love your introductory, unacknowledged ghost haunting land use law.
Yeah.
It's true. I, I understand, but it's, yeah.
No, it's interesting. I just thought it could be of some benefit to have it. I'm Bill Madden from GAF here in behalf of Two East Boulevard LLC, John Cornish and Michael Cornish.
And I need you to raise your right hand and swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, to be honest with you, I don't know, I can't recall where we left off back, what was it, October 20th, was that the date?
It was October 20th.
Yeah.
And there were a number of questions that were raised, and I think in particular there was some clarity sought on, so the, the application is for Two East Boulevard, and there seemed to be a bit of confusion about the role that Five East Boulevard plays in this whole thing, because there was mention of the parking on Two East Boulevard being for, for Five East Boulevard, because it's actually in excess of what is needed for the building on Two East Boulevard.
And, and that is what this plan actually says.
That is exactly, yeah, right, exactly, understood, but he asked where, he asked where we left off.
Which confused...
So that was, that was the question, the, I think the big question that was raised when we left our discussion last.
Were we overstating the number of parking spaces that we're proposing at Two?
Correct. And, and there was, there was discussion about Five, and it was unclear, because Five was not actually part of the application per se, how Five, what Five's role was in determining, you know, there's, there's a lot of parking on Two proposed, and we need to figure out the, the necessity for it, and, and then look at all of the laws that, and bylaws that affect it. So it's useful for us to know what's going on on Five, if the Two are connected, in your mind, legally, et cetera, part of the application, so that we can understand what we're looking at for Two.
Discussion, is that okay?
Well, let's start with Bill doing a presentation, and then we'll get into discussion after that.
Okay, so we'll start with the, with the parking, and that parking exhibit plan, that was one of the things that I think I was asked for, that we talked about, is providing some documentation as to where the parking was going to be needed. So I tried to color code it to the best that we could, and if we, if we looked at what the, the parking count was going to be for the restaurant, it was a, the restaurant was 125 seats, so they would need 25 parking spaces to, to provide adequate parking for the 25-seat restaurant. So the, the parking that's shown on Two East Boulevard is basically that parking in addition to the, the red spots that are shown in front of the building where the handicap accessible spaces are, and where there's two spaces, and I don't know if they're for the tenant that lives there, or, I think that's what it was, and we, and we, and we showed those spaces there as well. So the blue, those spaces with the blue dots in them, those were the ones that are associated with the marina. We need one space per, one, half a space per slip for the marina, so there's 60 slips there, and we would need, we would need 30 spaces to accommodate the marina. And I think we have, put some glasses on here. We showed, we showed 29 spaces that are, that are designated with the blue, and there's, you know, there's probably an ability to get another one in there, but we could conveniently show 29, and I know there's some latitude in the bylaw on the number of spaces, so I just left it at 29 for this discussion. So that's for the marina. So everything that's in blue is really for the marina, everything in red is for the, for the restaurant, and the pieces in green are for the office space is associated with the building at Two East Boulevard. So that's how we came up with our total, I think we have, what, 56 total? 56 in total?
On both sites.
Yes.
Did you want to talk to this, or?
I, I can talk to that briefly. I just pulled that together because there was a distinction that was made between, between a special permit and, and site plan review. And the letter that was issued by Paul Turner spoke directly to site plan review. However, a lot of the correspondence that was received by the abutters was speaking to deny, for the planning board to deny the project, and they were, I think, taking it out of context as far as what site plan review is and what special permit is. Site plan review is, you know, it's advisory more so than discretionary, and, you know, we think that it's, well, the, this document will tell you that it's really there, you know, you have a site plan review to improve the project through a public hearing, in a meeting, but there's not really an opportunity to deny the, the project at, at the hearing. And that was the sole reason that I, that I provided it. I thought it would be more helpful to perhaps some of the abutters that, that I kind of expected to show up that have not shown up.
Yeah. So I, I think that's actually a subject that we, we reiterate almost every meeting, that site plan review, we can condition, we can enumerate things that we want to see changed. We cannot deny it, it's, and it's not an approval, it's a, it's a conditioning that, that moves a site plan review forward. Special permit, we can deny.
Correct.
But, anyway.
Do you want to get into that, or when, when, when are we going to get into that? Because I think this is a change in use, for an unapproved use.
Well, go ahead, go ahead with...
No, no, I think we're trying, I, I appreciate, I, please, I understand exactly what you're trying to do, but I think you're trying to change the use of Two East Boulevard to make it a parking lot, an accessory to the restaurant. And there is a vehicle for doing that. I think it's a great idea. I just don't think site plan review is that vehicle. I think it, it needs a use variance, I think you need to go and design a better parking lot. But if we're going to do a special permit, and we look only at Two East, as you noted, there's, there's too many parking spaces. Or, excuse me, rephrase that, there's more parking spaces than the use requires. That's a, that's a better way to say it. And we would then be able to condition it to have fewer parking spaces. My, my other question is, there's some issues with the zoning bylaw backing into traffic that I think in 1550, for site plan review, I don't think you can back into traffic. So my question was going to be, Mr. Turner, and nu, not Mr. Turner, excuse me, Allen and Majors enumerated for the zoning board, a bunch of conditions. Were those ever responded to? I have his, his concerns, but I didn't get your, your commentary on his, one of those...
I thought they were on August 14th, but I...
I'm sorry.
August 14th correspondence, I think, might have...
Do we have that in our package, then? I have to go look.
So I don't, I don't know that we ever saw those responses to...
If it's in your application, I'll have to go back and look for it.
Okay.
Okay, but those are still my concerns. So backing into the, more spaces than the use requires, backing into traffic, and I know you have questions, so I won't, I won't, no, I won't ask your questions. And also the issue around mass general law, around the fire hydrant, parking around the fire hydrant, which Allen and Majors made reference to. So those would be my concerns purely from a site plan review perspective. And, and I, I appreciate, I appreciate what you're trying to do, I think, I understand why you're trying to do it, I just think there's a, a better vehicle for, for accomplishing that.
Yeah, I, I think that there's, there are a number of issues that I suppose could be conditioned, but I think that that gets very difficult, and I, I think that there are so many things to consider in how to make this do what you're trying to do, that need, need consideration different than what I'm seeing so far on this site plan, I guess is how I would phrase that. And I think, I mean, I think that if you're to retain the use, then I would say, I'm, I'm curious why the 1,080 square feet was used at 250 square feet, but not the 1,404 area that adds up to the 2,484 square feet of the single-story building. So that was one question I had. I would reiterate the, the backing out onto the right-of-way, that that's problematic. I would add that the way the parking is laid out, we've got a couple of, we've got, in particular, one one-way street, and that is 11th Avenue, and I think that there's parking that happens there, and granted, it happens after the sign, but the sign is located where it is so that, because that's the only place to, you can't put it at the very end of 11th Avenue. I would say that someone driving on East Boulevard would assume that if 11th Avenue is one-way, it's one-way to the edge of East Boulevard, as a practical sort of application, interpretation, if I were behind the wheel driving a car. The other thing that I think is somewhat problematic is that there are BURMs shown that are in place as traffic control devices along two sections, one along 11th Avenue and one along Ocean Avenue, and those are on town property, and I think as traffic control devices that were placed there by the town at the edge of the road, that crossing over those to get into parking spaces sort of goes against what they were put there to do, and that, I think that that's somewhat problematic. I think that the, with the 23 parking spaces that are shown on the site, I think it was 23, that, maybe it's more than that, no, I think it's, is that the correct number? Maybe we're down to 22. Anyway, with the number of parking spaces, I would say that that is an intensification of the density and the, and that aspect of the use of, of the site at Two East Boulevard. And as such, that to me would kick it into a special permit, so that's got to be looked at. It's also been brought to our attention that there's a 2018 site survey that was done by the town, or was, was commissioned by the town, that I believe is what the town considers the correct site survey, and it's based on meets and bounds, which there was an observation made to me that, that this is based on the 1910 and, and/or 1915 plating layout. So I think that needs to be looked at. And then we hadn't seen the responses to the A&amp;M report, so I'd, I'd love to see that.
If it's in the package, I missed it, I gotta go back.
Yeah, I, I didn't see that either.
Alan and Major.
It's a peer review, the peer review.
Peer review.
Yes. Yeah, there was a, a review done by Allen Major for the ZBA, which is applicable to us as well, but we hadn't seen the responses to their concerns. So that, that sort of summarizes the, the issues that I see moving forward with this, and I think, add that to Carl's concerns about the use and, oh, and one other thing, the landscape buffer that...
There is a variance.
This asks for, for us to reduce it to 10 feet wide from 20 feet wide.
And I don't think we can tacitly grant a variance through site plan review. I think that's a variance that would need to be, I think.
I, I think we found language.
Or a waiver.
That gave us the ability to, I don't know.
Oh, you did find language?
I, I don't.
I have to...
But I think it's, it's an issue, that it really, it should be a 20-foot buffer, I think, between parking and residential. So those are the concerns that I have. Any of the board members can weigh in if they've got further...
Madam Chair, I definitely agree with what both of you have said about the issues. I think the landscape buffer, 20 feet, I think, given the area, is appropriate, and I'd be interested in how that impacts the parking, whether this plan, it's difficult to determine, reflects the 20-foot buffer versus the 10-foot. I think that, as, Jane, as you have pointed out, the traffic control devices, BURM, on, both on the, where's the, northerlies, southerly and northerly boundaries, seems to really impact a number of the spaces. I also agree that this, to me, is, aren't we really creating two principal uses on this property? The parking associated with, and the retail space, the vacant building right now, and I would suggest potentially the other use, a parking lot for the, the Five East Boulevard, which to me is a principal use, even if it was determined an accessory use, it would relate to the building on the property, and I don't think that is appropriate in this case. So I think that there are a number of issues that, and some reworking of the plan, that need to happen to address the issues that we've raised. So that's what I would suggest. I would like some clarification on the calculation of the five spaces versus 10 for the entire building. So those are just additions or amplifications, I think, of what's already been said.
And the lot lines are also a concern, where, where are the streets and...
Yes, based on the 2018 plan. I don't see, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't see, was this an instrument survey?
Yes.
Okay. So there'll be a certification?
Explain what that means.
Certified on the plan, there's a land surveyor stamp on the plan that, that indicates that is a certified land survey.
Okay.
And the town aware, just to interrupt, and I don't mean to interrupt, but the 2018 plan from the town of Wareham, they have a licensed land surveyor, they engaged somebody to do that survey for them, and we've done every piece, I've done every piece of work in onset at that corner, and have never seen that plan. And we have, and we have conducted the survey, we have gone back to 1914, 1915, 1918, I brought it, I have it all in our file right here. We did a complete property line survey of, of the site, so...
Just a question, instrument survey means a guy went out with the, with the tripods and the...
As opposed to what? One of these...
Well, no, no, but I meant, that's what an instrument survey means.
No, that's exactly what it means. You're using, whether we're using our GPS or total station, you know?
I'm sorry, I just, I hadn't heard, I hadn't heard the term instrument survey before. I wanted to make sure I understood. I wanted to make sure I understood what you meant.
No, that's exactly what it was.
On-site plan review. Yep.
So we did, we did do the survey, and we're confident that the property lines that are shown on the plan are the correct, are the correct property lines. I know that at least some of the correspondence that was received on the project brought up some question as to its accuracy. But, you know, I have no reason to believe that it's, that it's not accurate. I mean, we went back 110 years to figure this stuff out. And there's been buildings that have been changed, there's been bridges that have been removed and put back up, there's layouts of the road that are pretty much, pretty much the same. But, you know, it's, it was all, it was all completed the way one would need to complete it to be 100% accurate on the plan.
Yeah, as a.
Just, Madam Chair, if I could, one other, I know 970 of the zoning bylaws about queues. It's a very busy, popular restaurant. I've been there, it's great food. And what 970 talks about is queues, people waiting. Are we relying on the parking attendants to tell people, we're full, go somewhere else? Or how are people who are waiting for an open space, do we have a concern? Should we have a concern about where they're waiting, potentially blocking the road, waiting to, for a space to open up?
We're, we're not, we're not concerned with that at all. I think the queue doesn't apply to parking in a parking lot. If we're driving into Wareham Plaza and we're looking for parking spaces in Wareham Plaza, we're circulating around the drive aisles, we're circulating around the parking fields, we're looking for a place to park that's not queuing like it would be in front of Dunkin' Donuts or a drive-through takeout. That's typically, at least my experience, where the queuing comes up, whether it's a car wash or fast food. So I wouldn't necessarily consider trying to acquire a parking space as being in queue to obtain service from a service window.
But what, it just brings up the question of, it's a busy night, it's a very popular place. So people are being directed to go elsewhere if the lot is full? I know just, I know you have a parking attendance. How is that being handled?
Yes. If there's, if everything's full, they direct them down to the town, the wharf.
Okay.
And I guess sometimes to the church parking lot on the other side of the bridge, which we have permission to do.
Yeah. I'm just concerned about people. It's such, those are such busy streets that there's no way for someone to circulate through this parking area. They really are left with traveling on the roads. Okay.
Well, it's off, it is considered off-street parking. It's not on-street parking.
Agreed. Yep.
You know, it's consistent with the five parking spaces that are on East Boulevard that are immediately adjacent to John's driveway. It's identical to what's on Union Ave. It's identical to what's at Stash's. It's, it's identical and consistent with the way parking is handled in onset, in most areas.
One other question. Thank you, Bill. The Allen and Majors, March 3 of 2025, were there any, was there, and we will all look at the response, was there any issue here, Bill, that caused you to change these plans? Or, do you recall?
To change what plans?
The plans that you presented to us. Do they reflect?
Oh, there is, there will be one that I, that I would point out, and that would be with the landscaping. I think if you go to 1020 and applicability, that landscaping may not even apply to the project. Because we're not expanding the size of that building, and we are by more than 1,000 square feet or 10%, whatever the, whatever the, whatever the number is. In fact, there's no work proposed on that building at all.
Where were you seeing that?
I'm reading that in 1020 under applicability in the zoning bylaw.
So there's one other item that I did not mention in my list of concerns, and that was, I believe there's state law that prohibits parking spaces within 20 feet of an intersection.
It's for state highway. I think that's what our reply was to that. It's not for local streets. It does not apply to local streets. That was for, I believe, state-numbered highways. I'll have to try to find that reply.
You just had it. Where'd you find it?
So your Mass General Law is 720 CMR 9.03. So Bill, you're, you're saying that it applies to state highways only?
I thought that's what it was, roads under Mass, Mass dot jurisdiction.
Yeah, I don't think so. But we could look at it.
Okay.
Same with fire hydrants. I don't think, I think they apply to town as well.
And I think the fire department gave us a sign-off on the parking in proximity of that hydrant.
Do you guys have that letter?
I think we do.
We do.
Yeah. He talked about the, the flow of the street and, and the width of the street, and he talked about the fire hydrant.
Yeah. And our reply is like to number 11, I think, of our August 14 letter, comment number 11 speaks to the fire hydrant and to parking.
Yes, this item 11 was Mass General Law 720 CMR, section 903. So I don't know whether the fire chiefs sign up on that overrides this general law or not. This says parking spaces should be adjusted around the position of the hydrant or the hydrant relocated with the approval of the onset fire department. So I'm, I'm not sure about that.
They speak to that in the letter.
So any other comments? Sam, do you have comments?
Nothing to add.
Mike, do you have comments?
Can I speak also to the, when you talked about traffic control device, the BURM? Well, it's not really a traffic control device. I suppose you could view it as one, but that's how you keep the drainage in the road. And that's how you direct the drainage to the, to catch basins, is by having a BURM or a curb. And that's what, that's what is done there, to keep the water from running into the lot and eroding off some of the crushed stone that might be there, or some of the, undermining the edge of that, edge of that pavement. And I think when that was all originally installed, it was all done under the direction like of municipal maintenance.
Do you think that there's any possibility that it getting driven over in a way that it was not really intended to be driven over? If it was, if the intention of a BURM is to be at the side of a road, then you're not driving across it on a regular basis. Is there the potential for there to be compaction of that BURM so that it's no longer functioning the way it was intended?
I, I don't think so, because I think that the, the compaction level that needs to be achieved on Batuman, this is like 95, 97%, subgrade equal to that. And, you know, it doesn't really leave a lot of room for, for further compaction there. But, you know, if you look around town, and when we have our BURMs that are at the edge of the traveled way, your driveways generally go right across those BURMs in any, any residential subdivision. So the BURMs, the, when it is BURM, you typically drive over it. As opposed to curb.
Yeah. I guess I'm recalling seeing breaks in the BURM in residential, that's just my recollection.
I mean, there's, there are instances where the break is there.
And I guess this isn't a residential subdivision. It is parking, basically parking lot and parking associated with the building. So I don't, I guess I don't see it as the same as a subdivision, as much as riding over it.
Maybe in a more frequent.
Yeah.
Basis.
Is much, is more of a challenge.
Well, the daily traffic count for a single-family residential house is 10 vehicle trips a day. I don't believe they exchange the parking spaces down there 10 times per day. I don't think that's what you see. You do see it in some restaurants, but I, I'm not certain that's what you see down there. I mean, John or Mike would probably.
Traffic study would tell us that.
Yeah.
So I guess, I mean, I've got all these concerns that we talked about, and.
Can we address some of them? May I address some of them? Are you guys ready for that?
I guess I'd like to make one more comment.
Please.
That I question whether this is an intensification of the use, if it stays in this layout, that, if I understand correctly, could push it into a special permit situation.
That's, that's what I wanted to address, if you don't mind. So last meeting that we had here, we gave you guys pictures that were from the late 60s and the 70s. And there were pictures of how that property was used when it was the fish market, and then subsequently the real estate place, and had the dive shop in the back. And all of that time, all of the area that was grass or wasn't as formal looking as what I made it, was all used as parking. They were, Bessie's had three big box trucks. They parked on that grass and in the loading dock area that I did level off and made it more attractive. They, they parked cars everywhere. That was the busiest wholesale fish market from New Bedford to the Cape. And it was also a clam and fish shack. It was very, very busy. And it was always when, when the Bessies made it into a real estate office, they had frequent meetings of 14 or less realtors coming at different times. They all park everywhere on the grass, everywhere. And then about 15 years ago, the town asked me when I was going for, to put the deck on the back to add parking, and the vehicle was suggested by the, I think it was the zoning board of Beals, to, that I actually leased prop, leased the spaces from Sandy Bessie. And we did. And we maintained that and kept doing it for you, for all those years. When I bought the property three years ago, I wanted to make it look better. And that's what started all this. We were already parking on all of that. We had people out there directing people to it. There were old ropes and old pilings that mapped it out. So it's, when you say change of use, over the years, that's been a busy corner, a busy, successful corner. And it's required that. The other thing I wanted to talk about with history is, when I first bought the Stonebridge 35 years ago, there was parking on all the streets. Every street, there was parking for whoever wanted to take it. And little by little, that eroded, and now it's East Boulevard and all, all the streets in onset are by permit only and residential permit. So all these permitted seats and buildings that are commercial in onset have, a lot of the, most of the parking's been eliminated, except for the paid parking down by the wharf. So there is need. Need is one of the things I heard that you, people were interested in.
And from another point of view, just in dealing with Dave Menard over the years, there's all kinds of on-street parking that's, that's in the layout of the street where the sidewalk would normally be. And a lot of the residents have, have, have converted that sidewalk area to, to parking, on-street parking for their own personal use. And that's just what has occurred, occurred over time. Dave never really had a problem with that, provided there wasn't a walking sidewalk that was removed to create that parking. So, you know, when we, when we've done other projects in different, other things in different parts of the town, that's one thing that Dave would always, would always refer to, is that he had no problem with on-street parking in that sidewalk area, provided it was, there was not a walking sidewalk removed for the parking. And you go down, whatever it is, what is it, East Boulevard? East? Yeah. You go down East Boulevard and go right down to the boat ramp. Everybody's got their entire frontage, not everybody, but I mean, the vast majority of the people have their entire frontage consumed with ones on-street parking. Pardon me?
And they all back out of their driveways onto the roadway.
Yeah, but you, they're not asking for our permission, but you are.
Right.
Did, do you want those, see those pictures again? Oh, I'm sorry.
Josh, does Josh want to add one?
Yeah, Josh, do you want to weigh in?
I don't know that I do. I'll get it aside. No, I think it's the, the opinion of the board tonight that there are quite a few answers that still need to be questioned, questions that need to be answered before they can really make a move on the application itself.
I think that's accurate.
Well, clearly, I want to go back and make sure I read, I missed, I missed your letter, so I need to go make sure I read that.
The response letter?
Yeah.
Absolutely. I agree, I agree with that. And I guess I would say, I hope that our concerns are heard. I think that.
I had a question for you. You've got some comments from the road commissioners that have, has that been covered?
They weren't really comments. There were minutes of, some meetings that they had.
So they haven't, they haven't raised any concerns we haven't addressed, or?
Not really.
Don't believe so.
I guess I would, what I would like the town's opinion is, Bill, what you were talking about the BURM, and because that's town on land that they're going over, accessing the parking over. I would like the town's opinion and analysis of that. Because that is, it's town on land. It could be.
From municipal maintenance or, or the road commissioners?
Right.
Or both.
Mm-hmm.
It's fine.
Right.
Well, it hasn't come before the road commissioners. I haven't met since February, March.
Okay. Well, maybe it's Dave Menard that we need to reach out to.
Yeah, well, they could convene a meeting to discuss it.
I agree. I agree.
Yeah. And I think they're willing to do that.
Yep.
Is there still a road commission? It's the Selectmen now.
Select Board. Yeah, yes.
I mean, I, in summary, I would say I totally understand what you're trying to do here. And I understand that you're trying to alleviate a parking problem. I just am not so comfortable with, maybe it's even the site. You know, I think every site has a capacity for development. And my opinion is that this is pushing it past that, that point of capacity. That's just how I'm seeing it and, and trying to imagine, I mean, it's, it's just.
It's no different from what's there.
What's that?
It's no different from what's there.
It's cleanup. And I, I know that I, before I was even on the planning board, I was I was hearing some comments from people about this layout and that it's, it makes navigation of a busy intersection difficult. I guess is how I would summarize what I was hearing. So I think those are the concerns that we collectively have. And I think that, aside from wanting to read the responses to the comments from Alan and Major, I'd like to see what your reaction is to those in the design, I guess.
Okay.
Agreed. There was also some question of a traffic study and I would like to quiz Alan and Major. Do we have Phil Cordero?
Paul's here in his place.
Oh, there we go. So the question is about a traffic study for this project and whether Alan and Major is comfortable with reviewing this with regard to traffic. And you don't need to necessarily answer me this minute. You could look at it and consider that and give me your professional opinion of whether a traffic study would offer more than you might be able to offer from your office.
I don't think a traffic study would be warranted here just because of the nature of Onset Village and the traffic that's already there today. I don't think a traffic study is going to give you any more information than what exists today.
Yeah.
So if you wanted to have an outside consultant look at it for traffic, we could coordinate with our traffic consultants that we usually use. And I believe when we submitted our peer review consultant application, we had McMahon Associates, who's our traffic consultant on a lot of projects, and they would be the ones that would come on board if you choose to engage them.
Okay.
I don't think it's necessary or required as part of this application for 2 East Boulevard.
Okay. So, I understood and I appreciate that.
That's helpful.
I know that there's been bugs in my ear saying, where's the traffic study? And I'm thinking, I'm not sure what a traffic study would offer us. So, but I want to reserve that ability if you guys look at it further and see any reason that that makes sense. So I don't want to write that off immediately.
Okay.
But I appreciate your opinion on that.
Can I also add to the plan comments or stuff like that?
Yes, please.
I've heard the board's comments and stuff and Alan and Major also has concerns. I believe the applicant needs to go to the ZBA for the landscape buffer for variance because they're not complying with the 20-foot landscape buffer requirement for commercial to residential. I also believe they need a special permit from the ZBA for deviations from the design standards of the Onset Village, which requires a four-foot perimeter buffer to screen commercial uses from the street. And then there's also the landscape buffer requirements for a 10-foot perimeter landscape to separate commercials from, commercial properties from the street. And because the way they're proposing their parking on, I know it's off-street, but it's directly against the street. So they're not really capable of providing that 10-foot required landscape buffer. And then when you go into the parking requirements, there's also a 10-foot landscape parking requirement for buffer. So those are all my concerns that I have for landscaping and how it complies to the ZBA. I mean, how it complies to the zoning bylaws.
Yeah.
I understand that the project is an existing use, but they're before the board as a new application. So again, it's the board's determination to determine if, how much of the bylaws they have to comply with. And I guess you're able to provide some waivers, or not waivers, but some, not holding them to the law, I guess, as what's required under the bylaw for a new applicant that was to submit an application today. So that's my concerns. And then there's also the comments about backing up into the streets because I know under your site plan review, you have your guidance that you're supposed to look at when you're approving a site plan review application. And it talks about not having cars backing up into the existing right-of-ways and stuff like that. And the way the parking's configured here, all cars are going to be backing up into the right-of-way. And then we also made comment about some of the one-way traffic. 11 Streets one-way. I believe the other street, not Ocean, yeah, Ocean Ave is also one-way to a certain point, but I'm not sure in front of the hotel if it's two ways there or not. So I know that's one-way at a certain point.
Yeah, so it's two-way apparently to get into the parking behind the hotel. And that's past where your parking is.
Okay. So then the only issue is 11 Street being a one-way traffic. I understand that people have to abide by the traffic laws. And if someone's going down East Boulevard and they see that open spot on 11th, they're like, do I make that turn and get there quick before a cop sees me or something? But again, they're breaking the law, so I can't say they have to abide by the regulations. So. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Go ahead.
Can we go back to landscaping and see if we can just review that element under Article 1020 applicability of the bylaw?
Now?
Well, if you don't mind, I mean, if we can dispose of it.
I know if you meant now or if you went, you wanted to-
I can wait till later, but I mean-
No, no, we can do that.
So while we're discussing, I understand Mr. Madden's point, but unfortunate, and I agree. I understand his point. 1020 seems completely at odds with the purpose of the article. But I understand your-
So I were rewriting the zoning.
Yes, I, yes.
Exactly.
That was my comment to Julie.
Bingo.
We've got to clarify that.
But I mean, it is there. It's the second paragraph of the bylaw.
I'm not questioning your interpretation.
Yeah. So to me, I would be of the opinion that it does not apply since we're not changing the building.
Not the building, but we are potentially creating a parking lot in other principal use. We argue in that way.
It's not a parking lot, though. It's off-street parking.
Well, yes, so we're creating a space for off-street parking. So we can call it whatever we want, but-
Actually, I wanted to go look, the town bylaws have a definition of parking lot. I have to go look it up.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've looked at all that. And I mean, it basically says an area to be used for parking. So it doesn't really give us direction one way or another for on-street or off-street.
Right.
But I mean, if it doesn't apply, if it were to be determined that it didn't apply, then we would not need to be going to the zoning board for a variance.
I guess I would consider this off-street parking because it's on private property. It's not on the street, which would be the right-of-way.
Right.
Practically speaking.
Mm-hmm.
I don't understand your point because-
The parking stalls are on private property. So it's off-street parking.
But so is the parking at Wareham Crossing on private parking. Why isn't, I mean, that's a parking lot.
And the new-
Yeah.
New parking lot.
Same thing.
Oh, you're arguing that, okay.
It's a parking lot, yes. Or a space for off-street parking, whatever you want to call it.
It's a lot with parking on it, so parking lot.
Right.
And then when we go, then when we go to Article 9 on parking, I mean, just under administration, under 9.10, there's an opportunity to deviate from the normally accepted practices and standards if those deviations have a tendency to reduce congestion and parking violations and minimize parking hazards.
I'd be of a mind to say that it doesn't do any of those maybe-
No increased traffic hazard to pedestrians or vehicle movement. I don't know about that.
Well, I mean, I don't know that that's working in your favor.
You know, it's like the same discussion we had downtown with the projects here.
Yeah.
Village district, walking districts, you know, how do we, how can we accommodate everyone?
I know, it's hard.
It's hard.
It is hard.
Difficult, yeah.
Yeah, the town clearly needs more and better parking in the villages.
Sure.
So where to with this?
Now, can I just add to that, please?
Yes.
So under site plan review, under Section 7, 6A, under landscaping for site plan review, it says all site plans will be subject to the landscape requirements of the bylaws. So I think that the landscape bylaws come into effect based on that one sentence saying that it has to comply with the regulations. And again, it's the way it's, the bylaws are ran, they're kind of poorly ran, but that's the way we interpret it. It says all site plan reviews need to go comply with the landscape buffering.
And so we, as a board, through deliberation, can take the applicant's input and what we're obligated to do is make a finding of fact based on their input, articulate that so that it's clear, whatever that is. And then our, can't be arbitrary and capricious. We can say, we think it applies or we think it doesn't apply, whichever. And that's what we need to base our result on. But we then are clear to the applicant, thank you for your input. This is what we decided. We're not arbitrary.
Great, so we have two members of the public here. Would either of you like to speak? Is there anybody online?
I have one, they just lowered their hand.
Okay. Okay.
Stop raising your hand.
Okay. You're still muted. There we go. Good evening.
Can you hear me?
Yes, could you state your name for the record?
Of course. Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Hannah Benoit, East Boulevard. I'm part of a group of 18 Onset neighbors who are concerned about the commercial parking at 2 East Boulevard. And I want to say that I do understand that the planning board's role in site plan review is advisory. I also want to point out that not all relevant documents have been added to the official online record for this application. Specifically, the letter from David Marshall of October 19th is not on the website. Mr. Marshall would be happy to forward that to you so it can be added to the official record. Another point, and just in response to what's been discussed tonight, backing out of a driveway is not the same as backing out of commercial parking. And the main problem to my mind is the seven spaces in front of the building that jut forward. Regardless of the ownership of that property, these spaces and the Jersey barriers that surround them create a traffic and pedestrian obstruction that was not there before. And now I'd like to make three quick points. First, we want to emphasize that the application that's before you covers only 2 East Boulevard, 2 East Boulevard, which is permitted for office use. So we respectfully ask that the board base its decision only on that address and on the materials officially submitted. The applicant is proposing a change of use for this property. So this plan needs a use variance and/or a special permit from the ZBA. Second, we ask that the board rely on the town's current legally recognized property boundaries, not historic street layouts. The town's current data and information show the actual property lines of 2 East Boulevard, the location of the drainage berm, and how vehicles using this commercial parking there currently enter and exit over town land. These details affect safety, ADA access, and fire department requirements. So we believe it's important to use the town's up-to-date map rather than older historic layouts. Finally, any conditions the board adopts must match the existing office use at 2 East Boulevard. If the applicant intends to include a different property or a different use in the future, that would require a separate application to the zoning board. We are not here to oppose improvements. We're simply asking that the board follow the usual process so decisions are made on accurate property boundaries, correct use, and current safety standards. Thank you for listening and thank you for all the work you do for the town.
Thank you. Bill?
I don't know what Ms. Benoit's experience record is. I don't think she can speak from a land surveyor's point of view without being one. And if somebody wants to go to the expense of creating another survey to compare it to the one that has been prepared, maybe that would be a suggestion for the abutter to evaluate. I mean, we're perfectly content with everything the way it is. And, you know, to say that you can't rely on historic information, that's just a fundamentally incorrect statement. And, you know, monumentation is in the field, monumentation has been moved. You know, the survey control that's out there, it's, you know, it's all been tied down. We don't just make this stuff up. I mean, people would like you to believe that's exactly what we do. We took an assessor's map and we just drew some lines on it and that's what we have here. No, you know, if I had my billing worksheet, I could tell you we probably spent $12,000 or $13,000 surveying that piece of land because of the depth of research that needed to go into it and how far back we had to go. And also, a portion of the land is land court. So when we go back and state that the property line is wrong, so land court's wrong too. And, you know, it's just not, you know, it's fine if you have something other than a conclusory statement as to where you're coming from. You know, let's back it up with some factual information. Let's see what it is, do some research, come up with it, and present some factual data. I mean, we have it. And we'd be very interested in seeing what anybody else might be able to provide. If there was an error made, if there's additional information that wasn't uncovered that we are made aware, that's perfect. We would want to know that. But, you know, I believe that we, like I said, we've researched this thing back 110, 115 years. And it's all right in that folder, all the old plans I can readily spread them out if you'd like, but we wouldn't be able to follow through it.
I guess I would be curious, in that vein, to know what the differences are between the 2018 and your survey, even just an overlay of the two and where the differences lie.
Madame Chair, through you to Mr. Madden. You said you're not aware of a 2018 survey, is that correct?
Yeah, I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
The first I heard.
Okay, so that's so-
Perhaps if, to Ms. Benoit-
Yeah, if they can produce it.
If that citizens group has such a cert, whether it's legit or not, I don't know, but-
Yeah, yeah, we don't know that.
I don't think that's been entered into the record.
Yeah, I think that's correct.
So the survey has been entered into the record.
I'm sorry.
The survey has been.
The 2018?
No, not the 2018.
That's what we're saying.
The 2018, yeah.
Yeah.
Which there, which I believe the citizens group is contending is at odds.
Right.
We haven't seen that. So if somebody, as you said, could bring that forward-
Then we can look at it.
Then Alan and Majors could look at it, you could look at it, we could look at it. And then we would understand if there was something. But I haven't seen a 2018 survey.
Because it, to the chair-
To Alan and Majors, are you aware of a 2018 survey?
No, I'm not aware of a 2018 survey. But again, we didn't do research on survey information and boundary lines out here and stuff because that's not our scope.
No, but you're not aware of it. That was my question.
To the chair, it appears to be about the road layout. It seems to be what the 2018 work was focused on. So I think that there was a report, survey, I'm not sure, Bill, what was produced, but we need to get our hands on that, I think. It's been raised a number of times now.
Madam Chair, through you to the Director. Mr. Perry, are you aware of such a document?
I haven't seen one.
Who would be the source in town if there were such a document?
I believe Dave Menard has been mentioned, through Municipal Maintenance.
Well, actually, somewhere in one of the documents that contended it, you actually did that survey, so.
I don't know if we did or not, I know that we've done a lot in Onset, in that corner also. Like when we did stormwater management for the town, we did all that work down in that corner, and I think it was around 2018, but I'm.
Okay, yeah.
My years just moved.
So it might well be that it's in your files.
Might be a file, Bill.
Yeah.
Right?
So, an overlay of those two might be in just.
Put to bed what was raised.
Well, who's going to get it? I'm not going to go get it.
I'm not going to go get it. Should I be going and getting it?
No, no, we don't.
They keep referring it.
There is a reference to it, and it seems to me.
Yeah.
If there is, then it's somewhere in the town's records.
Yeah, but my question is, I don't want anyone to think that I personally am going to go look for that.
No.
No, we're not taking that.
So, is it fair to ask the person who made the statement about the 2018 plan to produce it?
That's sort of what I was doing.
I think that that's of fair request. If that's a document that's going to be referred to, then we need a copy of it to look at, and to make that judgment of whether the two align or.
And what was the survey done for?
All of those questions.
All the above, everything factors in.
Yes.
So, one of the things, like your article on site plan reviews, the planning board is not an investigatory body. We review material that is presented to us. We don't go investigate, we don't have that authority, we don't have that capability.
If I could, Madam Chair, and Bill, again, this is a citizen, but we can take it for what it states, which is the Town of Wayham Municipal Maintenance Department. In 2018, commissioned GAF to prepare the street improvement project plan for Ocean Avenue, East Boulevard, Eleventh Street, and Onset Avenue. The plan was dated June first, 2018. So at least that gives us something, a start to track this down.
And it's understood that you don't do every bit of surveying and work in your office.
That's fine, I mean, that's what I was kind of, I know we've done a bunch of work down there, so.
Yeah, sure.
What was that plan? It was, you know, what were we doing? Were we working on the lines of occupation, where the curb line was, the street line, the gutter lines?
Who knows?
You know, matching it, I don't recall, but we can find out.
Yeah, I think that that's worth putting to bed.
Yes, Municipal Maintenance should be able to produce that.
Well, are you saying that if that statement is true, you would have that plan?
Yeah, we did that work, and I know.
You could go back and answer and say, no, we.
If that is indeed the plan, you know, normally a plan has something other than just the date, has a title, says who's it's prepared for, it says who drew the plan, who stamped the plan.
Sure.
All that other pertinent information that only a trained eye might know that is reflective on a plan?
I was just asking, if it's there, you could advise us as to what it was. Yeah, that's.
Happy to do it.
Not asking you to go recreate it.
No, but I think they should, you know, they're making, I think they should provide the plan.
Well, obviously, they've seen it, so somebody must have a copy of it. I agree, I just want to make it clear that I'm not going to go. I don't have that capability.
No, I get it.
That you have made clear, agreed.
Well, unfortunately, people think we can go do that, and we don't.
Yes, agreed.
So, Madam Chair, what are we doing?
I think we have some cogitation to do.
And the continuation?
To what date?
We don't want to drag this out.
No, I don't want to drag it out, but we should sort of come up with a list of what's outstanding that needs to happen between now and the next discussion. Is there somebody else online?
Ms. Benoit has re-raised her hand.
Okay. Yes, she may.
Hello? Hi, can you hear me? This is Hannah Benoit again.
Yes.
I just wanted to say that I'm not saying that the property lines are right or wrong on the application's survey, but I do want confirmation that the survey is correct and up-to-date.
Well, that's what the stamp says.
I also want to say that even if the parking spots are a hundred percent on private property, the fact is that the seven spaces in front of Two East Boulevard, which form a triangle and are bordered by Jersey barriers, are directly adjacent to the public right-of-way. And if you go down there on a summer evening or daytime, you'll see that this whole intersection is like ninety percent cars and ten percent people. It's a situation that presents a lot of danger to people and vehicles. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, in answer to your question, I think what I've committed to do is I'm going to go review the applicant's response to Allen and Majors. I'm going to think about the applicant's contention that Article 10 doesn't apply, and come to my own conclusion, which I will then share. And I will consider the fire department's letter versus the Massachusetts General Law about my concerns around the fire hydrant. I did follow up from the October twentieth meeting where I told Mr. Madden I wasn't aware of restaurants that had backout parking, but I was wrong. I went to, what's the name of the one there at the bridge? Narrows. That's not a great advertisement for what you want to do, but.
But it's factual.
But it's factual, yes. No, no, I agree, so I.
The hotel next door, that just put it in.
No, no, I just meant, I said to Mr. Madden at the last meeting that I wasn't aware of it, I went and searched it out, so I've done that. So that's what I will do. And then if this 2018 survey comes up and it's presented, I'll consider.
Do we want some information from Mr. Menard from Municipal Maintenance regarding the burms?
Yes, and driving of the burms, exactly.
Yeah.
And, and I guess, to your point, Carl, is reviewing that letter, Allen and Majors has, I think, raised some additional questions that were not in that letter.
What?
Based on what was just.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Paul. The applicant says they've responded to those concerns, do you have that response?
Yeah, we have that response, and we have a draft letter prepared. It was just that, at the last meeting, there was confusion on how the application was going to proceed, if they were going to withdraw and file it under Two, not Two East, but Five East for the restaurant, and then include off-site parking as part of their application, or is it going to continue as part of this property? So, we have the letter ninety percent complete, we could finalize it. I'm not sure if we could finalize it this week due to the short week at Thanksgiving, but we could definitely finalize it beginning of next week and get it to the board and also to the applicant.
That would be something to review.
So, actually, I have a couple of questions, late dawn's over Marblehead. Do you serve lunch at the restaurant?
Sure.
Okay.
It opens at noon.
Okay. And this is staying as an application for just Two East Boulevard, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Madam Chair, should we ask the road commissioners to take a look at what we're doing? I'm not sure which crosses over to which.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, we're talking about changing the road down there, there's the road commissioners.
We're not changing the road.
Well, we're talking about a use of.
It depends how you, this is a change, there's nothing here. I mean, it may be an improvement.
But, no, no, but if I am reading the map correctly, they're only changing on the inside, their property, they're not changing the road. The question is, people may be driving on it like it's the road.
That's kind of my point initially, is.
But that's not the road.
But.
Depends if you're driving through there or not.
Historically, the road commissioners have looked at traveling in and out of the road, so traffic can always come up.
We have spoken with the chair of the road commissioners and asked for their input, and.
On this project?
Yes, specifically. Face to face. And you met with that person face to face? Did they have to comment? That was my question to you earlier.
Yeah, but I think that that person should be given the opportunity to make the comments.
They have not, and the time has passed.
Oh, for written comments?
Yes, but we're certainly open to it.
Josh, were the road commissioners asked to comment on this project in written form?
By email, I believe, I'll have to double check.
Okay, and, yeah, if you would check on the timing of that, because they had, there's a time period that they need to.
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days.
Twenty-one days, and we have gone around and around with this concern, the same thing with the fire department, as you know.
We may not, because this application, well, I don't know when the date starts for that.
It was back in August, the application was submitted.
But the request to them may not have gone out any earlier than our first.
Pretty in line with what we received, yeah.
Yeah, that has nothing to do with our hearings. Is it going out automatically from the system yet? Or it's.
No, no, we're still doing it by email.
But you believe, Josh, just check and get back to us.
Double check.
No, but my point is, certainly if they want to come and comment, as long as we haven't closed.
Or provide a written comment.
Right, as long as we haven't closed the hearing.
Right, they're still able to do.
But my point is, is that we've asked, and to the best of my knowledge, we haven't gotten anything.
Okay.
I think you've gone to a person, not the board.
Say that again?
You've gone to a person, not the board, it has not been on their agenda for all five members to discuss.
When we send the notice to all of these boards, that is the notice that, and we go around on this, the same thing. Nobody ever responds to those requests to us. The only one that we force a requirement for our response from is CONCOM.
And FIRE.
No, well, after the, I don't remember who's the last time we've read, we read the bylaws, and they don't have to respond.
On FIRE is not part of the town.
And we can't force them to respond anyway.
Administration, so there's a little bit different relationship there than some of the other boards, so.
All I'm saying is, if someone wants to reach out to the road commissioners.
I will.
But we have, that was my point, I personally asked them to weigh in. And did this not come up?
A written response?
Any response.
Not that specific.
Telepathy?
Not that specific.
If it's either written, or they need to come and talk to us, because telepathy doesn't work for me. I'm telepathically impaired. No, my point is, is there a response forthcoming that you're aware of?
Not a specific response, no. Not that I'm aware of.
I'm getting lost.
I think we have two folks that want to speak.
Ms. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? I'm just, I'm looking at the exhibit that was provided for tonight's meeting and stuff, and I was just wondering if the applicant could describe the peak hours of the marine use versus the restaurant, and how if those marine parking spaces could be also utilized for the restaurant, or is there, I understand probably at lunchtime in the summertime, the marina parking lot is probably full, and you have limited restaurant, but I assume in the winter and at nighttime, those marina spots may open up that provides adequate spaces maybe for the restaurant, or at least offsets what's required on the off-site parking requirements for.
We do the best we can to keep that lower parking lot plowed, but it is not easy. It's because of the shape of it, there's no place to put, you can't get to put snow, and the steep grade makes it almost impossible to plow. We tried having a snow blower down there, it didn't work out at all. So, in the summertime, the people that have the boats there, until six o'clock, that's their parking lot. There are bathrooms that are there accessible for them, it's not for the restaurant, they're just for the marina. It's the parking down there, it's just for the marina. There's seventy slips, and there's doubling the parking, there's only twenty, thirty, thirty parking spaces. We're only required to have, I forget.
One half a space per boat slip.
Yep.
But again, that's outside the scope of this application. But I understand.
The thought is helping.
And the only thing, I did want to make one more comment, the Jersey barriers keep getting mentioned. Well, we tried running without those, and people just swoop right across, they shortcut across in front of the building as close as they can get and go around the corner, both ways. When this all gets, if this ever gets to the point where I can use this space for parking, I want to do something more attractive and more creative, but for the time being, those plastic barriers work. And in the wintertime, when it snows, we push them right up against the building, and immediately that parking area is just, the whole area that's been parking for fifty, sixty, seventy years is just a thruway. You can't keep people out. And it is part of the land that I bought. And I have title insurance for it, the whole bit.
So what are we doing about the road commissioners?
I can reach out and see if they want to come talk to us.
But that would meet your.
I can do that. So, the other question at hand is, continue to when?
How does, the eighth is.
The eighth is, where's my agenda, how do we go?
We need time to digest this. Bill needs time to respond to.
I think the eighth is not, is too soon.
Then it's in January, because that's the last one, I think, right? We're not meeting on the twenty, are we meeting on the twenty-second? I can't remember.
What's our calendar say?
Eighth and the twenty-second.
Right now, the twenty-second is a meeting.
Yeah, I haven't heard otherwise, and it is the fourth Thursday.
I have your actual schedule, it says you're meeting on the twenty-second.
Okay. So we'll all be festive and in the spirit of season?
Hopefully. Any disagreement with going to the twenty-second?
Nope.
I would entertain a motion to continue to the twenty-second.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Captain Stagg.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Colbert, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye. So we will see you on December twenty-second.
If you have some, if you have a formal list of things you want us to address, that might be really helpful.
I was trying to enumerate, I enumerated my questions.
I jotted a few down, do you want me to recite what I have on my list, compare yours maybe, or what's your preference?
Do you want to shoot that out to us?
Or he can read it, he can read it.
He could, you could read it.
Got the berm, the property lines, the 2018 plan, the landscaping, the road commissioners, and then I had hours of use timelines on the marina, those are, that's what I have written down in my list.
And you're going to, if Allen and Majors does a rebuttal to your August fourteenth vote, that would be another item.
Reply to their.
Response, yeah.
Or at least be aware of it, or.
I think confirmation of the twenty feet from the intersection is a question.
That's all on the list, right? That's.
That's seven twenty C M R.
Yeah, okay.
Is that a walking? Is that a walking village kind of contention or not?
I don't know. I don't know on that one.
You know, this may help, but it may not. It's chaos there in summer. I've worked in Conway for years. In the summer, it's just chaos. People walking the road, people going every direction, parking right in the intersection. They just, whatever, I've seen it parking on the bluff. One will park, and go, oh, hey, and then another, and another, and another. Police come along, show them away, but it's chaos. And I hope this works.
It has. The last two years, from my standpoint, of course, I'm biased, but it's way better. And the director butters think it's way better. The people that have houses right there, they think it's way better, because they're faced with the really chaos. They've written letters. There's letters in your package from two director butters, three, actually.
And there's a letter with about 70 signatures on it for people that support the project. I don't know if you've seen, I think you might have, but I'm not certain. I'll make sure you get that.
Okay, yeah, if you would add that to your list.
And then I guess we have to figure out this October 19th letter, where that is, because I don't remember seeing that. Pam, I don't remember her...
Marshall? The Marshall letter?
Oh, yeah.
Did you, did you have pictures?
Where'd my notes go?
Isn't it the Marshall letter? We know it has.
David Marshall, yes.
The Marshall letter, yeah.
I don't remember seeing that.
What was it, October 19, you said?
I don't need that. I wrote that down sometime. I gotta go.
I think it came out via email.
I hope so.
I think we saw it via email, that it may not have been posted since.
Yeah, I don't know that I saw it.
So, Madam Chair, I can speak to that. There were a few public comments that were put on to OpenGov that had somehow been removed. I captured one of them. It was brought to my attention over the weekend, so if you see one that was posted over the weekend.
Okay, that's what it was. It was a reposting.
So, and I looked into the David Marshall letter. There's an email from me to get it posted, so I'm assuming that it probably got posted and just removed somehow.
It just came in this afternoon.
All right, I'll look, I'll look.
I think that's the list.
Yeah.
What we're trying to do.
Any more business?
What's that?
Any more business?
Yes.
I don't see anything on the agenda.
It's not, but I, we have to vote on continuing the A and R for make peace.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
So, Madam Chair, it's my understanding that, oh, I'm sorry, I want to read it correctly.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that this is under...
Forty-eight hour?
Member, under Item 10, any other planning board business not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the posting of this meeting, so the A and R for...
1525 A and R for AD make peace. I believe the applicant has requested another continuance to December 8th. I move that we continue 1525 A and R for those properties to December 8th.
Second?
Did you have something?
I wanted to add some language about constructive grant into that.
Okay.
Motion, that the continuance, and I want, I want Josh to hear this, because it was in conversation. So there is a motion made to...
Continue.
To continue the A and R discussion to December 8th. And I just wanted to add language to that motion that it was, it's based on a verbal agreement between you and the applicant's representative that no constructive grant would be issued based on this continuance. Is that accurate?
No, well, they requested the continuance via email, so we have it in writing.
Okay.
We also have the decision deadline extended to, I had it extended to December 11th.
Okay.
Just giving, you know, some time. If you were to make, take action on the 8th, we have till the 11th to actually write it up.
That's what I wanted, was something that indicated that they would not get a constructive grant based on us extending this...
Yeah, I think that, I think you're covered. I don't think that's something you need to worry about.
Okay, all right, and we have a second?
Yeah.
So while we're in discussion, and their attorney has sent his opinion?
No.
We still do not have his legal opinion?
That is accurate.
He indicated at our last meeting that he would send us a brief, and that's...
Immediately. I was expecting it like the next morning.
Yeah, I was, too.
And to our attorney?
To our attorney?
Well, he's gonna send it to Josh.
He'd file it with the board, and with, for attorney review, of course.
So we have not seen that yet, and I guess anticipate its receipt at some point.
Sometime soon.
It better be in time for us to review it before our meeting on the 8th.
And Attorney Bowen to review it.
Yes.
Because without legal comment...
Yeah, on a legal brief.
On a legal brief, I don't, yeah.
Yeah.
So we need a...
All right, so we have a motion and a second.
Yeah, so, a vote. Mr. Baptiste?
Aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Yeah, vote aye, which is to allow for the extension, approve the extension.
Sam Colbert, aye.
Jane Gleason, aye.
Before there's a motion, I have a liaison report I'd like to get off of the board as well. So in the fall town meeting of 2025, when we talked about AD...
That was two weeks ago, yeah.
This year.
Sorry, let me go back. In the spring town meeting, the town meeting where we discussed the solar amendments to specifically allow within the B-dod, the Attorney General has given an opinion on that. They, they didn't say they approved it. They said they had no reason to deny it. So that will go into effect after we publicly advertise it. One of their main points of not denying it, there was a letter presented to them describing it as a clear prohibition under the amount of space available within the town. They said it wasn't enough, being the B-dod was heavily covered in well and resources, including cranberry bogs, and that they just felt like the land area wasn't enough. So from the Tracer Lane case, there was a determination that 2%, a 2% allowable zoning district for applications is too small. So 2% is too small, can't do it, it would be disallowed.
So 2% is what the B-dod is of the town's area? No?
No. 2% of any town's land area is too restrictive, and those would never be allowed.
Because Tracer Lane was 2%.
But we've already got a percentage already approved and installed. That should count.
It doesn't, but the B-dod is more than 2% anyway. It's about 5.7%.
Why wouldn't that count?
Because you're amending the zoning bylaw to an area certain now, not, you should have done it before the solar developments were put in place for, so anyway.
I understand lawyers, lawyers.
So the AG, you know, we've made it clear that 5.7% is not considered a prohibition, so they have allowed it on land size. I will comment, and I've seen this with almost every Attorney General letter, where they talk about bylaw amendments. They say, "Due to the limited scope that the Attorney General's Office has to review these, it would be well-suited for you to consult with your town council to see if it's actually defensible." But they went a little further in this one to say that there is new regulations being promulgated through the state that will most likely affect what you have put forward, so it may be worthwhile to think about those regulations as the state promulgates the regulations.
And when will we see those?
Well, so Attorney Bowen had attended a meeting on Thursday where there was, you know, great discussion about it, and it sounds like it's gonna be the summer of '26 is where we can expect those regulations to start.
Spring and then effective in the summer.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Mike Baptiste, aye.
Carl Schultz, aye.
Julie Moran, aye.
Sam Colbert, aye.
Jane Gleason, vote aye.